I'll motion to approve.
We have motion, is there a second? We have a second, thank you Judy. Any discussion regarding the minutes as they've been presented? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Townley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerty?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Ms. Lipowski?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Uh, yes.
And Chair Freemeyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries. Item number four is the public forum at this point in time. If there's anybody from the public that would like to address the commission regarding any particular item on the agenda or any other concern they may have, if there's anybody in the public now, it'd be the time to raise your hand virtually, I guess. Nancy, I'm not, I'm not aware of anybody. Is there anybody out?
There is, hold on.
Okay, thank you.
Sonora, is that how I say your name?
Yes.
Would you like to speak to the commission? You would have three minutes.
Um, you know, I'm really just interested to know what's going on and stay in the loop with it all. Hi Judy. Um, and I was curious if anybody would like to come down. We're hosting a block party. If any member would want to come down and kind of promote our initiative.
Um, could you tell us about what your initiative is?
Not mine, yours, the city's, you know, the, you know, to try to get everybody involved with the, with the zoning and the changes.
Okay.
Or maybe even like some pamphlets with the SKU that we can have people scan or something, just to get more awareness out there.
I, I believe she may be talking about the events in the parks that.
Yeah. No, the Inglewood, so the city of Inglewood is asking people to sponsor block parties for the Inglewood night out.
Oh, my apologies. That's to a different department, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. So that's what that is. So we're just hosting a block party to honor, you know, for the night out.
Okay. Excellent, certainly appreciate that. Anything else?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Certainly appreciate it. All right, is there anybody else from the public, Nancy?
There, there is not, so I'm going to make you the host now.
Thank you. All right, you're able to see that huge rise to power there as I became the host of this meeting. It's, it's a joke everyone, it's okay to laugh. Daryl, I saw you laugh, man, you got a grin from ear to ear. All right, so with that, we go to item number five on the agenda, which is the building code amendment. Wade, I believe I'm turning it over to you, is that correct?
Uh, no, this would be Karen Montanez's topic, so we'll turn it over to Karen.
Welcome Karen.
Evening, everybody. And so really, I'm just here tonight to kind of give you an update on the building department, things that we have going on, a little bit about our organization of the department. Um, by my memo, you can see that we're pretty small, we're part of community development. We are currently short an inspector, so if you know of anybody that would make an excellent building inspector, please have them apply. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of new blood in the trades, so people are starting to retire out and it's very difficult to replace them, so. That's where we stand with that. Also wanted to kind of give you an update as far as our response during COVID and how life changed very quickly. Luckily, the building department really did not have a complete shutdown. We continue to do inspections. Until recently, the only inspections we weren't doing was on occupied homes and those we were doing virtual. We have started doing inspections in person, taking the necessary precautions. It just became very difficult for our inspectors to do things virtually. It was fine on small projects, but larger projects, it was quite difficult. Um, we did start doing a lot of things online. The way we're doing it right now is a little cumbersome, but we'll get there with a new process, which actually takes me to my next thing. Last night, city council did approve a new contract for a new permitting and land track system, and so we hope to have that up and running in about nine months. And so then, um, you know, we will be doing online plan review. You know, contractors would no longer have to come into the city and it would really streamline that process. We would still obviously take things in, you know, by paper. We don't want to leave that portion of the community out that still likes to do things, you know, in person and with paper, so we'll still be open to that. Um, the next thing we have going is next week, the building department and the fire marshal's office will be presenting code adoption amendments to council in the study session. We are planning on going to the 2018 codes. Luckily, there's not a huge change from the 2015 to the 2018 code cycle, so every once in a while, when from one code cycle to another, you have a lot of changes, big changes, but there really aren't that many big changes this, this time around. So that is pretty good. And just to kind of give you an idea, some of the jurisdictions that have already gone to the 2018 codes, Castle Rock, Cherry Hills, Commerce City, Denver, Douglas County, Golden, Jefferson County, Parker, Thornton, Wheat Ridge, Boulder, I believe, has also gone to them, so we'll, we'll be keeping up with the, our neighboring jurisdictions. And as you know, some of the future projects we have coming up, big projects is the new Swedish tower, so that, that's, that will keep our inspectors quite busy over the next two to three years. The other large project is the Navajo apartment complex that's going up. And hopefully both of those will have their permits by the end of the year, so we'll be getting started with that at the beginning of the year. And I guess at this point, I just opened it up to any questions you may have of me.
Certainly appreciate that. Would anybody have questions for Karen at this point? Diane?
Hi, thank you for sharing. I, I am just curious if regards to your first point on new inspectors or looking for new inspectors, what type of individual, if they haven't already trained in that sort of thing, do you typically look for?
So, um, we, we'll look for either experience in the trade itself. Luckily, the two inspectors that we have right now, they can do multiple areas of inspection, and so the new person, that gives me a little bit of leeway as to what that person does. So it could be the building, electrical, or plumbing and mechanical. So even if they don't have experience maybe in doing inspections, if they have field experience, that would definitely, definitely help. And then they would have to get certain certifications within a year to 18 months.
And that helps just to help me think if there's someone.
Okay.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments for Karen? Yes, Carl?
I was looking at the list you have for the apartments and townhomes and other builds going on. Doesn't look like there's all that much going on, but there was an article in the Herald about the new apartments, the townhomes, apartments and whatnot being built. And it listed about 12 different projects with a total of a thousand, and this is not complete, it's 1,028 apartments being built, either approved or being built now.
We don't, currently, we don't have any apartment projects. There's some townhome and condo projects. Most of those are fairly small, you know, in the 20 to 30 unit range. There are some that are potentially coming up, a couple of apartment complexes and townhome projects, but they have not submitted yet. And so I can't really speak to whether that's going to go through or not. It depends on our economy really and how COVID affects, affects the construction industry.
What is the, the Winslow, I think it is, the crane, there's a crane storage area there?
Correct, near the Ironworks Village project.
Right, yeah, the Ironworks is in process, but the, is that approved or is that?
No, they, they have not submitted building plans at this point, so that's why those aren't included in these numbers. These are potential projects, but
Okay.
Not, not ones that I would, you know, put, put down an ink at this point, especially when I'm working on revenue projections. I'm usually pretty conservative.
Sorry to interrupt, but Chair Freemeyer, I believe Ms. Austin may be in the attendees. If you could promote her into the panelists?
Okay. Hang on. And Nancy, if I was going to do that, how would I do that?
If you, if you look at your participants tab, you should see panelists and attendees.
Yep.
If you click on attendees, you should see Michelle. And you'll go to more and then promote her to a panelist.
Okay, hang on. Let me try it again.
Sorry, guys.
Yep. Now you get to learn that the chair doesn't know all things about Zoom. Always have somebody do this.
Please have to give me back control.
There you go, Nancy.
Okay. Here she comes.
Excellent.
And there you go, Mike.
Excellent. Wonderful. And I've learned something new, so what a deal. Okay, I believe we were, Michelle, welcome. Carl, I believe you're still, were you asking a question at this point?
Uh, yeah, the, the Ironworks is, that's, that's about basically done somewhat.
Correct.
Okay.
They're, they're hoping to have it all completed by the end of the year, but you know, there might be two or three units still still dragging behind, so for sure, the first quarter of the year, they will be completed.
Yeah, I was going, going through that list of apartments and actually drove around and looked at the site to see how far they were along, and some of them weren't even doing anything, and like the Navajo, they, they're working on the ground there, but I was reading, I added them up and there was over a thousand apartments that are being built or planned on being built. So I was a little surprised with that.
Yeah, as I said, the, the only ones that we have received construction documents on for review is the Navajo project. The others are still kind of in the early phases and you know, basically doing their due diligence as to what they can build and, and how that's going to work.
I was just curious, the Navajo has been approved a couple of years ago, wasn't it?
I'm not quite sure when it was. I, it was, I think it was closer to five years ago.
Yeah, it was like 2012, 2013 timeframe.
Yeah, it's quite some time.
Oh. Interesting. Okay, well, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you. Kate Townley?
Hi, thanks Karen. Um, I am not super familiar with the, the building division, and I was just curious, kind of with fee structures and things like that, do those align also with most other communities in the metro area, or if you can kind of tell us how that, that works?
Yeah, I mean, we're under some and a little over others, but we're pretty much in line. I'm thinking that we raised our fees, I believe it was like in 2017 or 18. And it had been probably close to 10 years since we had raised them, and it was, it was a rather small change, so we didn't see any backlash from raising those fees. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions? Yes, Colin?
Actually, I had a, a couple of questions. One item, I noticed there's no commercial items identified in, as part of these inspections. Is that located under a different wing or?
On, oh, on our inspection list, it's, it's all combined.
Okay.
On our monthly report, it doesn't, that's not broken down by residential or commercial, it's, it's everything. Same with the permits.
So on your list of the 2020 currently, on page eight of that document, is that, are those, do those fall under the single unit or two unit or anything like?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the monthly report.
Sure, yeah.
No, I only did, I'm sorry, I only did residential in that listing. But if you were interested in doing commercial, I could always run a new report on new commercial.
I guess I, I'm just wondering how it all factors in, because I guess the follow-up question is, you know, obviously you said Ironworks is a huge portion of those ones from 2017 to 2019, and there was obviously a large number, and we've got a pretty good falloff on, on this 2020 year. So what, I guess, what is that right number of inspectors? Is three the right number, or is it, do you feel it should be more or less? You know, and is commercial kind of carrying some of the load on some of the other side?
No, I think the three works out quite well. Luckily, I think with the, the COVID and, and with Ironworks kind of wrapping up and those other two projects not starting yet, having just the two inspectors, they're not overloaded. The bad thing with inspections is there's no rhyme or reason to how many they're going to have on any given day. So there might be one day that one of the inspectors only has six inspections, and the next day he has 20 inspections, so. Like, the good thing about Inglewood, because we are small, they're not spending a lot of time going from place to place, so. And when you look at some of the inspections, if it's at one of the townhome projects, apartment, or duplex, or whatever, you know, they might have, you know, four inspections, but they're all at one spot.
And then I guess my, my final question is, the permit valuations, I mean, the, the numbers of inspections seem to be, you know, 25% lower, but our permit valuation was 80% low. I guess what, what contributes to that?
Oh, some of that is just with, you know, some of these projects wrapping up. So we're still doing inspections on them, but we're not collecting fees because we've already done that, you know, either several months ago or last year.
Okay.
It, it's the same as, you know, when we collect the fees for the Swedish project and the Navajo, those permit valuation is, is going to go up quite a bit. And, you know, it is, so it all evens out eventually.
And I, I think usually you have a certain number of inspections that are included with that, or if they just can't get it right, do they have to pay any extra fee or anything like that?
Yeah, so, you know, if our inspectors have gone out, especially more than twice, and they've, they're writing up the same thing, they will issue a reinspection fee. And kind of going to the future online thing, and even now, if, if somebody is going to get a reinspection fee in the future, we will not allow them to pay that online. We want them to have to take the time to come down and pay for it. You know, it's, it's not so much the monetary, it's also for them to understand the time that's involved in our inspectors going out to do an inspection for something that has still not been corrected.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, no?
Oh, for the table that you have on the, the last page showing the, all the different unit homes, would it, would you be able to follow up and send a report that separates the Ironworks Village properties from, from the rest of them?
Uh, sure. It would take me a little while, but I can, I can do that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Do you want it by year or just as a whole?
Uh, by year would be great.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Diane?
I was just gonna, in reference to Colin's comments, I think you were saying the permit valuation looks 80% low. I think though, if you look at the year-to-date, from 2020 to 2017, it's not substantially different. It's more just August, you know. Depends on which month they submit, I'm sure.
Thank you for letting me point you to the right side of the, that's a really good point, thank you. I, I did miss that, I was just looking at August, so appreciate, that's a good point. Actually, we're, we're above then, I mean, low compared to 18, but, thanks.
Another thing, and this is just, um, I think it was in 2014, 2015, we had a huge increase in number of permits that we issued, number of inspections, and shockingly, it was because of a hailstorm. So that, you know, it's things like that can, that can really affect the building department that you can never plan for. I'm just kind of looking at the numbers. In 2014, we issued by this time in August of the, of over 1,200 permits, accessory permits. This year to date, we've issued 283, so you can see how much it can change by something like a hailstorm.
Yep. Okay, any other questions? Anybody else? Carl?
Uh, the council approved a permit and land tracking offer last night?
Yes.
So what, what is the land part of that? I'm not familiar with that.
It's just basically the, the whole addressing of permits, so even now, currently, when we do a permit, it starts in what we call land track. So it, it's just keeping track of all the properties, everything that's being done on them. You know, all the permits, all of ownership, everything would be in that, the land part of it.
Is that tracked by address?
Yes.
Basically not, no? Will, will the software, will that lighten the load on your personnel?
Yes, it will. And so that's why we have our senior permit tech. He's already kind of transitioning to help in other areas. He's gotten his certification to do inspections as well, so he, he's been helping with some of that as, as well.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions, anybody? I, I just have one regarding the building code moving to 2018. For a number of years, there's been a lot of discussion regarding residential fire suppression or sprinkler systems inside the home. Is that, is that something that still keeps raring its head, and where is that in the code, if at all?
It, it is in the code, and we are amending it out again. I don't know if any of you know, so I believe it was in 2012 when we adopted. We did a survey of neighboring jurisdictions. They all said they were going to adopt the residential sprinkler requirement. Um, Inglewood was actually one of the first jurisdictions to adopt that code cycle, and so we adopted with sprinklers requirements. All those other jurisdictions backed out. We were like the only ones, and so we actually went back to council and amended it out, and so we've kind of stuck with that. Just off the top of my, it's buried underneath something else, I can't, if I move my computer, it'll mess it up. I think Centennial requires fire sprinklers for townhouses, and Longmont is looking to do it in, by 2022. But very few jurisdictions are doing it, and the ones that do, it's usually where it's a huge new development, and, you know, we're already an established community, so you're not going to see, you know, a, a housing development of, you know, 200 houses, where they're putting in a whole new infrastructure.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that. The next item, and I know as, as we talk about lot coverage, the building code has a great deal to do with what reasonably creates a home. And back, and I want to say it was 2008 or '09 building code, there was a, there was a big change between the run and the rise on sprinkler, on, on stairways, which changes the geometry of the home. Um, I'm curious, what is our current run and rise, or what is it going to be compared to what it was? Because it makes a huge difference in, in how big that home, how expansive the home gets, just to get a, a set of stairs from point A to point B.
Right, um, I, it is changing, but it's allowing to have a shorter rise and run. So, um, off the top of my head, I can't, I can't tell you what it's changing to.
Okay, but I remember a number of years ago, no, I'm not that interested in the detail. I just remember, I remember the backlash years ago when it went from, from a huge, I mean, a huge step in a short rise, and apparently it's coming back to being more of a traditional size.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Those, those are the only two things I had. Diane?
Um, I, I am curious with regards to what you mentioned, is that, is it going to be requiring stairs be trimmer or just allowing?
Allowing.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions regarding anything for Karen at this point? Karen, we really appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you so much. I do have a gentleman that, I don't know whether his qualifications fit, but you know, he, he may be somebody you want to talk to, but I'll, I'll let him follow up as he sees fit. Certainly, certainly appreciate that. And we'll, I'll keep our ears open for anybody who looks, acts, and smells like they've been in the building trades and responsible party who'd be, you know, very good for the city of Inglewood, so really appreciate that as well.
Okay.
Excellent. All right, seeing nothing else, Karen, we wish you a great evening. Certainly you're welcome to hang around. The, the meeting gets very riveting at this point. So you'll probably enjoy it a great deal. We'll go on to the next item on the agenda, which is staff's choice.
I do not have anything this evening.
Okay. Nancy, anything at all?
Uh, just to remind Michelle, her term is expiring February 1st, to, if you wish to reapply, that you will need to do that by October 22nd. And, and Daryl's term will expire, and unfortunately, he cannot re, reapply because he is term limited.
Thank you, Nancy. I did actually send it in my application to reup, I think last week, but thank you for reminding.
Okay, great. Okay, great. I'll follow up, make sure they got it.
Great. Thank you.
Excellent. All right. Anything else staff-wise? Daryl, it looks like you raised your hand. I can't see you, though.
Yeah, I just I I was just gonna ask a quick question to uh to our guests, but uh it wasn't, it was covered, so it's fine. Um, so that was my question.
All right. Thank you. Anything else from or for staff at this point? Okay, let's go to attorney's choice. Dugan, you've done excellent job so far. We look forward to words of wisdom.
Nuggets are winning thirty-one to twenty-seven.
Excellent.
And I have nothing else to report.
That's what we like.
Thank you, Dugan. I'm I'm taping it, so don't don't give me any more updates. I want to, you know.
Okay.
From the beginning.
It's the start of the second, so there's plenty of time left.
Okay, great. I like to fast forward through the commercials, so thank you.
All right. Next, we'll go to commissioners' choice, and I'll go around the uh go around the horn as I see it here on my screen. So Michelle, why don't we go back to you?
Well, I apologize for not joining the meeting sooner. I thought I was all prepared, and alls I had to do is, you know, click a little link. That was not the case, and so I missed a good deal of the meeting, and I apologize for that. If there was a handout, Nancy, I sent you an email. If you could forward that to me, because I think I heard lots of questions about. I only have three pages on the the call to the meeting, so there it sounds like there was another document that had lots more pages to it.
I don't think. I'll I'll double check.
Yeah, with with Karen. I don't know. Anyway.
Yeah, I'll double check.
Okay. Other than that, I I don't have anything further, except for an apology. Thanks.
No worries. Um, let's go to Daryl.
Okay, I just I was just curious about the, you know, the ongoing status with both the. Uh, the redevelopment of of the unified plan up. And also, you know, I guess there's some meetings in the park, and also I was curious about what is moving along with the. The vote that will be, I assume, coming up in just a very, very short time for the downtown redevelopment plan. Or actually, I'm not not I'm not remembering the correct terminology, but I think you know what I'm talking about.
Can I address the I can address the Unified Development Code project? Uh, we've had two events in neighborhood parks. Uh, we've had about a dozen participants at each of those. And we have with regard to the survey that's circulating. Uh, we've had about five hundred and fifty responses to the survey. Uh, so we're getting good turnout there. Um, we had nine focus groups. We held nine focus groups last week. Anywhere from three to ten people per focus group. Uh, we met specifically with members of the chamber, the development community. Uh, we met specifically with residents for the remainder of those. Those focus groups, it was sort of sign up at the time slot you wanted for the residents. And basically, we're just trying to listen to what people think needs to be fixed with the development code and what's working, what's not working. Much like the questions we asked you at the joint study session with city council. Um, we're hearing um quite a wide range of things. Um, as you can imagine. You know, the the development regulations are one of the bigger topics, such as lot coverage, bulk plane height, neighborhood characteristics. Uh, possibly, you know, looking at some sort of design guideline for residential construction, multifamily, that sort of thing. Uh, we are hearing a lot about the accessory dwelling unit, the ADU ordinance. So I think we'll be talking about that more as we go go along. Some some questions and concerns about parking and landscaping and definitely affordability of housing. So, you know, those are some of the bigger, you know, overarching topics that we're hearing. But we are, we are getting a good turnout for all of our our things, in in our opinion, anyway. So we're scheduled for three more park events coming up this month, and the survey will be out there through the end of the month. And then we're going to start phase two of the public outreach. In early October, and. We're still working through what that will be. You're going to see a little bit more. Specific questions, a little deeper dive into some of these topics as to. Where we should be going thus far. It's been, you know, higher level communications and opinions and topics, so. We want to get down deeper into the weeds a little bit about some of that. Uh, Logan Simpson will be coming to this meeting to provide a more thorough update into everything that we've been doing. At the first meeting in October, so I I believe that's your next meeting, in fact, that they'll be here, so. That's sort of where we stand.
Any sense of any sense of uh who's who's involved at this point? I knew we had a, you know, at the meeting, we we have a lot of uh. I don't want to say demographics, but in terms of people that have been here a long time, people live in different places and that kind of thing. I mean, any sense of?
I I do know that overwhelmingly, it is citizens of Inglewood. There's eighty-eight percent of citizens that have participated in our outreach so far. Uh, demographics has been a little more evenly split. In in terms of who's participating, so we've got a good mix there.
Sounds good.
One of the one of the things we'll be talking about, and especially in this time of of COVID and whatnot. Uh, you know, was how to. You know, have some conversations with with those aging in place and. And and so forth. So, you know, the Malle Center is open by reservation only, the Rec Center's reservation only, so it's. And you and you can't go in and visit with nursing facilities and assisted living, so. That's that's the that's the big focus, I think, going forward, is how to better engage that demographic of aging in place and elderly. So open to ideas if you have any, but that's what we're working on right now.
Okay, thanks.
All right.
And with regard to your second question, I'm unfortunately not the most up to speed on that. You know, we could follow up with Dan Peramba and get him in touch with with you or have him provide an update at the next meeting or something like that.
Okay, yeah, because obviously with the election coming up and ballots coming out any day now. You know, it'd be interesting where that's where that's at.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Kate, uh, Tony, Kate Tony, pardon me.
Um, I would just say that throughout the month of October, the APA Colorado Conference will be going on, Colorado Chapter, the American Planning Association. So they'll be doing a virtual conference, I think, three days a week, has different tracks each day of the week. Um, and then you can participate in all of those via Zoom. And I think most people are members, or at least some people are members from the committee, and there's a a discount typically for planning commissioners who participate.
Noel, if we could go to you next.
Uh, nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane?
Am I still there? It was up on my screen. Do you hear me? Okay. Okay. I'll get closer. Um, I just want to second what Wade said. Thank you to you and the team at the city and Logan Simpson for putting together those focus groups. I was in one of the steering committee meetings, and we had a really good conversation. With some of the residents. And I'm just trying to encourage people that I know and see to take the survey. And and if they feel like going to the park, I think it's easier to get people to fill out the survey, but um it seems like. At least several people that I've talked to were like, yep, filled it out. And I think that it gets them thinking. In a way that uh they may not have thought before, and and I think the survey actually does a really nice job of having visual representation to. Kind of give some character to the survey, so people have a better understanding when they're talking about lot coverage and things like that. So I'd really encourage you to tell everybody you know to take it.
Okay. Thank you. We certainly appreciate that. Colin?
Uh, besides creating this bit of a frenzy at the last town hall meeting, which I apologize for popping up on my calendar and emailing everybody, do we need to be there? Um, I don't have anything else to add to to tonight, so sorry about that last couple of weeks ago.
All is well. Carl?
A couple of things here. The I I think I've noticed that. Live fairly close to the Kmart. I think I've noticed some activity over there. I think they're finally. Starting to either put in the storage units or hopefully. Redesign the front of the building so they get some stores in there. I'd like to see a bakery in there and a breakfast place. That'd be really nice. I could I could appreciate that. Now, I think they're they're actually moving over there finally. The the other thing is the, like I mentioned before, I I I went through that list of apartments that are. Either approved or being worked on. A thousand apartments is gonna, I don't know what that'll. Be be the equivalent of population growth, but probably. Maybe two maybe two thousand people or something like that, but the the density of Inglewood is much higher than Denver. And it's uh Denver is second running, like six hundred people per square mile behind Inglewood. Inglewood is. Five thousand three hundred and sixty-six per square mile. It's the highest in the whole Front Range area. I'm not sure what the limit of our density would be, but that's pretty high as it is. Just wonder why. How it got there and what it's gonna do for our shops. It's supposedly the density is supposed to help fill these stores, but. I'm not seeing it. So that's all I got.
Thanks, Carl. Judy?
Just real quick, there on the D downtown development authority, they do have a steering committee of people in that area that are affected. And there's some rules about how much how they can reach out to voters. So I know the chamber's trying to help to reach out to make sure all the voters are aware. Of what the downtown development authority is and what their vote means. There's that, and there's actually two ballot questions related to the DDA. One, um, one is the creating it. The other one has to do with the amount of debt, I believe. I forget. It gets complicated, but um they are trying to reach out to all the people that are eligible to vote for that. So that was that. And then I appreciate the comment on the fire suppression. I happened to be on. The Housing Authority when that was in the code, and I can tell you, if you want to mess up affordability of housing, require fire suppression in single-family homes. The cost per square foot was just to the point where we could not have built the triplexes that we built. If we'd had to put in fire suppression, we couldn't have made the made the numbers work out, so. Just an aside on that. That's all I got.
Good. Certainly appreciate that. Kate Fuller?
I don't have anything to add tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, I'll go ahead and finish up. Um, I do have a question for everybody. By a show of hands. The question has been raised a couple of times regarding election night, November third. And the question is not who you're voting for. Do not want to know. What I do want to know is. That is the night we have a regularly scheduled meeting. I do know that four years ago, we had a meeting on that night. Who will not, who knows right now, they will not be in attendance for whatever reason. Diane? One, Michelle, anybody else? Okay, so we do know that if we're going to three, so we got three.
Do you know, does Inglewood have, I've seen a lot of communities have a shortage of poll workers. Does Inglewood have a shortage that you're aware of? Because if so, I'll probably volunteer.
Go ahead, Michelle.
Um, Arapahoe County does have a shortage of people working the polls, so that would be great.
Okay, I'll reach out. Thanks.
Okay, so why don't we do this? We're kind of split here. It looks like we may have or may have the ability to have a quorum, but let's go ahead and do this. We're going to meet in a couple of weeks. Think about what your plans may look like, and if you if you know you're going to be a no. Then what we can do is we can respectfully ask staff to either move items up, if that's possible, to the last meeting in October, or move them. To the second meeting in November. Now, the issue with that is we oftentimes, we run into Thanksgiving week, and I've not looked at my calendar. But that is problematic at best. So if you're going to be available, or if we can have a small agenda or whatever, because polls don't close till nine or something like this, so. You know, let's let's kind of think that through, but independently, if you want to send Nancy a note, say, yes, I'm a definite no. Or yes, I'm a definite yes, I can be there, or I can be there till eight o'clock or something. We'll we'll do our best. Michelle?
Um, I just took a quick look at my calendar, and Thanksgiving is the fourth week of November.
Okay.
Uh, so it's almost at the end of the month, and polls close on uh election day at seven o'clock.
Oh, at seven? Okay.
Yes.
There you go. All right. I just know we vote, and then they they count them on that night, so looking forward to it. All right, so we'll.
Do you think we'll still be remote um the week of Thanksgiving? Because that might, we might all be able to do it easier if it's via Zoom.
The uh the city council, it's my understanding, the city council has voted that through the end of the year, all meetings in the city of Inglewood will be remote. So unless they change their their mind or follow CDC directions, we're we're setting the setting the trend. Okay, anybody else regarding that? Um, the other thing I just have to say is. I think it's excellent that that we're moving forward. I I would encourage staff to push forward and and move forward with this two thousand eighteen code. These codes are set up to take in the most. For the or the, if you will, the best technology of the day. Making homes safer, better, hopefully longer lasting, and giving people a better sense of kind of what they live in if they're building a new home or remodeling. And so the sooner we can adopt the new code, I'd encourage the council to do so. And certainly appreciate all the questions and the answers which we are given tonight. It gives us the opportunity for council to review and get a little bit more background, so. That's uh that's all I had. Seeing nothing else, we will adjour. Uh, pardon me, Carl. Go ahead.
Uh, Wade can correct me on this, but I I believe there is a public event at Baker's Logan Park this Saturday at ten o'clock.
That that's correct.
Okay.
Bates Logan Park, yes.
And then uh just there's another one, uh Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, at that little bitty Baker Park up in. Northwest Inglewood, way way up there. And then just, there's another one, Tuesday, the 29th, at that little bitty Baker Park up in Northwest Inglewood, way, way up there. Bates has one this weekend, Saturday at 10. That's all.
Alright, thank you, seeing no further comments, we'll adjourn, wish everybody a great rest of the week, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.